Can we get this going?
We'll just take that time before Damian gets here.
Okay.
Six thirty, I'll call the meeting to order. Then before we do the pledge, at some point, if you haven't signed in yet, please sign in if you're here tonight. And now the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag and the United States of America and to the republic which stands in our nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can I get roll call, please?
Me or Dave Dillon?
Here.
Council members, Ken Mueller, absent. Norris Johnson?
Here.
Lindsay Larson?
Here.
Lori Game, absent.
The approval of the agenda, can I get a motion to approve?
Make the motion.
Second.
Any discussion on that? No additions tonight unless you guys have any?
No.
Well, if it's all in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Agenda passes. On the consent agenda tonight, can I get a motion for that first?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Tonight, we have the approval of the minutes, July thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. Approval of bills, resolution twenty-three, twenty-one, donations. That was a correction. Resolution twenty-three, twenty-five is donations. And then ordinance five-one-two is enacting and adopting the supplemental code. Two ordinances. We do that every year, so we were going to see if we could waive the first reading and go right to the second reading.
Okay. By a motion?
Oh, you are. There you are. Just like that. There you are.
Yep.
Long as we can do that, all in favor of the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
I have this question on this ordinance five-twelve. You said that's just an annual thing?
Yep, that's the one we do every year.
It's, what happens is every ordinance that we update then gets put into the American legal, legal publishing and then gets posted back to our website. Yep.
Changes.
Yes.
Yeah. All right, moving on to the open forum. If anyone is here tonight to address an issue or comment on something that is not on the agenda, please stand up and state your name and address.
Chris Carlson, Board Home Township. And we're applying for a grant to redo a portion of Hundredth Avenue. And we would like a letter from the city or some form of support that we could advance to the engineer. This is the second time we've applied and it's going to be between seven hundred and fifty million dollar project, so we can't do it unless we get a grant, so.
Okay, I'm sure we can do that.
Are you doing the local road improvement grant?
Yep.
Okay. Okay, I can certainly get you a letter of support from the council. Sure.
Good, thank you. Anybody else? Hearing none, we'll move to the public hearing regarding the vacating of a portion of road right-of-way on Highway Fifth Street Southwest. Public hearing is opened at six-thirty-four. Anybody to discuss that? Did you have some, anything to add to that?
I don't. It's just a very short piece. High, not, not a big impact to any of the projects, so.
No.
Would allow the buildings to be moved how far?
That was the purpose of the vacation portion, so that the, they could move be further south away from Highway twenty-three.
Kind of helped with your entrance too, didn't it, a little bit?
Yeah.
Yeah, not really. Okay.
Is that Fifth Street there where it occurs?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes. Yes. Yep.
Is that going to make it a little tighter on Fifth Street then?
I don't know if there'll be any parking there. I mean, they should be driving into your place.
Yeah.
They'll park on the side. Do you see there parking inside? Shouldn't be parking out there.
I don't know that Fifth Street will change other than that, I'm sure.
No. You just won't have that dip in. You could still park there if you wanted, but you won't have that dip in where it is.
No more sledding there.
Yep. Anything else on the vacation? Otherwise, we'll close the public hearing at six-thirty-five. Request communications, employee recognition for years of service. That's you.
All right. We will go to keep this to the doors, cat feet. You want to come on out? Your thirty-five years of service in the city of Malacca. It's a lot.
Yes.
Vicky James, for your twenty years of dedicated service to the city of Malacca. Is Amy Adele here tonight? She's not here? She's not here. Okay. And Becky Porter. Rebecca. Becky, for your five years of dedicated service, we may give you. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, yes, thank you all of you for all your service and everything you do for the city. It's really appreciated. Moving on to ordinances and resolutions, resolution twenty-three, twenty-six, vacating a portion of road right-of-way on Fifth Street Southwest.
Move for approval?
I'll take it.
Anything we need to add to that?
No.
Okay. All in favor indicate with an aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Resolution twenty-three, twenty-six passes. Resolution twenty-three, twenty-seven, approving a public hearing for an interim ordinance authorizing a study and imposing a moratorium on the operation of cannabis business. And a motion for that?
Make the motion.
Second.
All right, we will have discussion on this. So the, here's my question, Damian. Doesn't the state already have a, isn't it a year already from the state?
No. It's basically, there's no necessary, necessarily a timetable for the state to have the new agency, the new office that's going to be regulating this, established or hoping to have it put in within the next year. If we want to put a stop to this at this point in time with any municipality, we need to act, enact our own ordinance, suspending and then calling for a study, much like we had to do with the adult use stuff probably about fifteen, sixteen, twenty years ago. And so while it's, if the office is opened up, say, in the next six months and licenses are starting to be issued, if we don't have either this in place or regulations in place, there's nothing we could do to regulate it. So by doing this, it's kind of a stopgap. It gives us until January twenty twenty-five to figure out, to get the legislature time to figure out what they're going to do, because there's always, obviously, things that need to be tweaked within the legislation itself. Plus get that office opened up. And then we can kind of figure out city by city, what's going to work for you guys and what you want to do in the way of regulation, or license, and things like that.
So if this were to pass and they open it up in eight months, and in that time, we kind of have a handle on how we'd like to handle it, can we?
Yeah, it just, it suspends it until that date or to, or until such time as the interim ordinance is repealed by the municipalities. So you don't have to wait until January twenty twenty-five. It just gives you until January twenty twenty-five.
That's what I wanted to make sure of.
The only thing I would also note, it's like, I didn't put this in when I drafted it and sent it to you guys. I wasn't sure when the public hearing would be, so that's going to need to be added into the resolution, presumably the September meeting. So just make sure you note that, if you pass the resolution.
Any other thoughts from you guys?
Makes sense to, to move cautiously.
Yeah, I'm assuming they're going to address it next session, I would hope. Okay. All right, hearing nothing else, all in favor indicate with an aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Resolution twenty-three, twenty-seven passes. Resolution twenty-three, twenty-eight, approval for final plat for Blue Waters Potato Patch, Malacca.
Move for approval?
A second.
Seems like we've had this on the agenda a few times. You all good to go?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and everything went well Monday?
Mm-hmm. Yep. Planning Commission approved it. No issues.
Okay. Any other discussion from you guys? Nothing? Everybody's good? You good, Norris?
Yep.
Okay, all in favor of twenty-three, twenty-eight? Indicate with an aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Twenty-three, twenty-eight passes. Resolution twenty-three, twenty-nine, developer's agreement for Blue Waters Potato Patch, Malacca. Anything new on that? That all look good with you?
Do you have a second?
Yeah.
Yes.
Sorry.
The only one we have.
This is a little quiet.
We'll just take the address.
Yeah. If no questions on that, all in favor of twenty-three, twenty-nine indicate with an aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Twenty-three, twenty-nine passes. Ordinance five-one-three, prohibiting cannabis use within public property and public places. First reading. Can I get a motion for that?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Okay. And now my question on this one. Oh, sorry, I'm on the wrong one. That's the business. This one is not, is this only for flower and the smoking? This is not for edibles and what we have now, correct?
Correct. The, the ordinance that we enacted last year regarding edibles and drinks and things like that, nothing changes with respect to that.
Okay.
This is just to address the new legislation, making it okay to use in public. We want to, most cities want to be able to regulate it within public places. And so that's what this is designed for.
Okay. Which at this point, legally, you can't buy it anyhow.
Well, you can possess it. You can.
Well, I guess you can have red leg.
Yeah. Legislation allows possession of it. But if we don't regulate use in public places, there's nothing prohibiting it from happening.
Right. Yep. But it doesn't affect the, the drinks and the, okay, that's, okay. Any other questions on this? No, it's first reading anyhow. Hearing none, all in favor of ordinance five-one-three indicate with an aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Ordinance five-one-three passes, first reading. Ordinance five-one-four, interim ordinance authorizing a study and imposing a moratorium on the operation of cannabis business, first reading.
Move for approval?
A second.
Don't know if we have any questions left on this after we had one. Anything different on this? Are we good?
Nope. This is the first reading of the actual interim ordinance. We have to have the public hearing on this one.
Yep.
So we'll have the public hearing at the next meeting. Have the second readings of both and presumably hopefully everything can go into effect at that point.
Okay. Sounds good. All in favor of ordinance five-one-four indicate with an aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Ordinance five-one-four passes. Ordinance five-one-five, amending section one fifty-six of the zoning ordinance by making changes to the Malacca, City of Malacca zoning map, first reading.
Move for approval?
A second.
Anything come out of this at Planning Commission?
No, they were all in favor of changing that entire area to an R two.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? All in favor of ordinance five-one-five indicate with an aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Five-one-five passes. Ordinance five-one-six, amending land usage, one fifty-six, zero-three-seven-B regarding height in R three, multiple-family residential, another first reading. I get a motion for that?
Someone?
A second.
And we're okay again with Planning Commission?
With the Planning Commission, yeah.
Okay. Any other questions? I didn't have any. All right, all in favor of ordinance five-one-six indicate with an aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Ordinance five-one-six passes. Okay, moving on to reports and departments, boards and commissions, city manager.
If we do have an update here from StanTech and regarding the airport road project, they'll be working closer with the, the survey with Bogart Peterson to that, the geotechnical investigation that's been completed. The wetland delineation has been completed, so they're moving right along pretty good here. The environmental review will begin this month, which will take that four months to complete, so that, that's going to be a slow process on that part of it. So they're recommending that we start with the memorandum, memorandum of understanding with Board Home and Malacca Townships in regards to the expectations and future maintenance responsibilities. And we've, we've had some discussions, so we'll probably get back together with some meetings again with each of the townships and try to work through that process with them going forward. I did mail out to all of the residents along that corridor for this project, the first update from StanTech, and I will mail this one out to them as well. So they're well-understanding and the townships will also get this.
Well, the good news is it's on schedule and nothing's come up. That's good. Okay, you don't need any action on that, right?
No.
Okay. Anything else?
No.
Okay, I'll move on to the police. Incident repack, packets here. Anything else, Quinn?
Just the incident summary of this one.
Okay. Parks and Public Works. You didn't want to present?
Well, we got Northwell filled in.
There you go.
Perfect. Public Works, we do have StanTech.
Yeah.
The bids for the access road by the liquor store?
Yes, that would be, yep, the ACM was the lowest bid at the one twenty-nine, five twenty ninety-two, followed by Omen Brothers at a very close one thirty-five, fifty-eight and fifty cents. So those were the two closest ones. Council to award the bid to ACM, lowest bidder on this by motion.
Okay, can I get a motion for that?
I'll make the motion.
A second. Is there any, any concern or any reason for that?
Not at this time, no. I mean.
Since those two are so, so close.
Yeah. No, we, we did some really good research, so.
Bill was good with them?
Bill was good with ACM.
And the plan will start fairly soon on this?
September.
Perfect. Good. Anything else? All in favor of the bid going to ACM LLC indicate with an aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Bid passes. Liquor store, Vicky, are you still here? Anything there?
Um, well, we had a visit yesterday from Anheuser Busch. They, the big guys came down from Missouri and were touring some of their facilities and had a very nice meeting with them about some future promotions to do with them. They seen our beer cane for the first time. They were pretty excited. They actually were at the Holiday Gas Station and thought it was a beer truck parked there. Thought it was a semi. That, that was kind of the whole idea of what we were going for. So a lot of people have come over to see the beer truck there. So, um, so that was fun. They loved our stores and it was organized, clean, easy to shop. So that was fun. Also, we started doing split pricing at the liquor store about a month ago, where if you use a debit card or a credit card, you get charged the three percent fee to help us kick back on our credit card fees. So in the first month, we've saved just over two thousand dollars at the tolls. And a last trip, it's been a full month, but throughout the year, we should save about twenty-five thousand dollars in other forms of fees.
That's good.
That's it.
Okay, thank you, Vicky. Fire department, request for hourly pay. Chris, are you on it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we just, we've been talking about that for a while. We just wanted to look at, you know, changing hourly. We've been per call and per event for I don't know how many years now. And I asked the region actually what all their pay structure is and more than I thought were actually hourly now, and a couple that weren't, trying to think about going that way. I think we'll have better retention of people. We'll give the hire easier. Right now, we're eight down. We can use, we could use some new hires pretty quick here. It's getting a little rocky. So I think it'll help with that and just events around town that we, you know, were asked to do. I think we'll get a lot more volunteers that way. So I guess it's kind of the basis of that. And some of these calls are out there for four or five hours out of our own jobs.
Right. So that would be paid on the hourly if it's a twenty-minute false alarm, whatever, it just goes to an hour?
Yeah, minimum one hour.
Yep.
Yep. Same thing applies if the truck leaves the bay to get paid, if they're done, it's just a missed call. Drills would stay the same, they'd go to twenty-five dollars per drill. And then also pay stays the same and everything else. And Tammy's been helping a lot with the numbers on that too, so thank you for that. And it would, it would increase the budget, I mean, obviously, quite a bit, but. I don't know if you came up with the final number or what it would have to be, but.
Nope, still working on that, so.
We got some ideas.
And I don't know how the department's budgeted it, because there's no way of knowing how many calls are going to get home or even.
Right.
How many people show up?
Too many people show up.
That's a, that's a, that's changed every day too.
Oh, that's true. That would affect the number.
And this might help.
Yeah.
You're going to leave your job for four hours and you're going to be secretly paid for it versus leaving and not getting paid.
Yep.
Is this something you can kick to the budget committee?
Well, that's what I was going to bring up here once we kind of went through it all, because I don't think anyone, I don't know, did you have some thoughts or?
Yeah, I've certainly got questions as far as, oh, you mentioned about raising the, the charge per call.
Yeah, the ruling has been stuck on the, on the.
We did change it about four or five years ago, the way we did it. It used to be kind of a flat rate. Now we went by some more towards like the hourly rate.
So for fire calls, it's five hundred dollars per hour. But we know, the national average of that is sixteen hundred. So I think that will be no problem bringing that up to seven fifty or even more. And then kind of slowly bump the rest of them up too, just a little bit, like about fifty percent. I don't think that's too drastic, but.
Well, that's going to take some time to put those numbers together and see what kind of revenue that would, that would bring in to offset.
Yeah, because I'll have to go back and look at how many calls you actually did and how many actually got billed. And then get, come up with some good numbers.
But at least there are some ways built in to possibly offset a little at least. Yeah. Okay.
Yeah, we haven't had a new applicant for over a year probably. In the last four, we got we lost one already.
Give away a slot at the golf tournament if they join, that might do it. Do you have any other questions? I mean, I think, I don't think anyone, I think we all agree that there's an issue here that needs to be addressed. But I think the budget committee would have to look to figure out, you know, where we can try and make something work and where the dollars are and go from there. So at this point, we would table it and put it to the budget committee?
Mm-hmm.
And then you can finish numbers and they can look at the numbers and.
Yeah, because I also need to find the impact for the township contracts as well.
Right, there's still a lot of.
Impact to the levy.
Yeah. That work for you, Chris? And you can, you would still be the contact, I'm assuming, for all this?
Yeah.
Good. Hopefully, we can figure something out. Good. Anything else?
I need a motion to table.
Anything else from you guys?
Our side-by-side is fully in service now and the old one forced and picked up and we got that taken care of. We are really close to getting our spec and price on our new engine. Probably at the next meeting, it'll actually be ready for the price and, and that part of it.
Jesse, does the spec include the lights and any additional equipment?
It doesn't include all the lights and all the truck itself, but it doesn't include any hose or any, any, virtually everything else would come off of another truck, but most time you always been buying new hose when you buy new truck. There might be a few odds and ends, but they also include some of that stuff for like a mounting expense for small tools that we would, you know, think of that we would might need or want to buy new or.
Were you going to try for any grants on this truck?
I don't think so, because we talked about that before.
Yeah.
I mean, I mean, we could, we can apply for the small ones, but I mean, anything big we've done.
See, there is that community facilities grant that's out there through deed. You might want to take a look at that one. They do cover fire trucks. So that, that might be one that I can send you, you guys, that information tomorrow and get that to you. And it's, it's open year-round, so you can apply for that one at any time.
Once you get the, correct the prices up, you can do.
Right. Yeah, that, once you get those, yeah, get those over to me so I can look at, you know, if we go grant dollars and that might be the route we might need to have to take on that particular large amount of money, so we'll look at that.
Anything else?
Um, no, I don't have anything else.
Okay. So while we look at that, in the meantime, thank you guys for being willing to step up and do the work that needs to be done and I don't know where we'd be without volunteers like you guys, so it is appreciated. Planning Commission? Anything with Planning Commission?
We need a motion to table.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yep, can I get a motion to table?
Motion to table.
A second.
All in favor of tabling the request for hourly pay indicate with an aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? There you go. Now Planning Commission. I don't think we had anything there.
No.
Um, committees, budget committee, that will be coming up, obviously.
Coming up, yeah.
Economic development. Do you want to mention the visit?
The EDC, yeah. We will be meeting with Amy Kobachar on Monday at four-thirty. We're having a meeting at Haggis. We'll talk about economic development, what our city needs, and then they'll talk about workforce shortage, childcare shortage, development in our area. We'll be talking about how industry we need to get to this city as far as new industrial park businesses out there. So just some general needs for the city, and they, they approached us and wanted to come and meet with us. And then after we meet with them, we'll be meeting at Haggis, and then we will tour the Haggis factory over there. So that should be a real nice meeting.
Yeah, nice for it to be in town and hear from us. No unfinished business, new business. Contract to provide a school resource officer services. Do you want a motion on this and then we'll table it? Or motion to table it or discussions first?
Well, based on some of the letters that have recently been distributed with Quinn, it might be the recommendation to table it until next month until we can, we can't fulfill the contract needs anyway at this point, just because we'd have a officer shortage ourselves, so it might be best to just table it and see what they do with that legislation on that law that has been passed in education.
Quinn, on that letter, that's, is that like the chief's association law lawyer or?
Yeah.
MPPOA is the group that, it's the fund, defense fund for law enforcement officers. It's generally tied mostly to LELS or union groups, but it's open to any law enforcement officer in the state, so that would be licensed officers, general counsel. officer in the state, so that would be licensed officers, general counsel, put that out to the members.
Okay. And you were on board with that too, Damian, right? I'm kind of baiting on that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, we need clarification on what an officer actually can do at the school.
Yeah, pretty dramatic change.
Yeah.
So, I'll get a motion to table.
I'll make the motion.
One second. Any other discussion on that? We can still discuss, I mean, it's still an option, we just got to figure it out, right, Quinn?
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Good. Okay, all in favor indicate with an eye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Okay, we'll table that for now. Special event application, Malacca archery 3D scramble. Need a motion for approval?
Vote for approval.
A second.
Any discussion on that? Looks like a really good event. All in favor indicate with an eye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Passes. Special event application for the Homegrown Music Fest.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Anything different or changes or discussion on that? Looks pretty similar, okay. All in favor of that indicate with an eye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Homegrown Music Fest passes. Temporary off-sale permit for Timber Valley Grill.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Anything with that we need to know?
No.
Okay. All in favor indicate with an eye.
Aye.
Opposed. Temporary off-sale permit passes. Miscellaneous. Council comments. Three of us, it should be fast. Lindsay?
No.
Nothing.
Okay.
I just have one thing, just a, just an informational piece. I ordered, I don't know how many of you are familiar with challenge coins? They're in the military. I'm only aware of them because Damian Patno does this at the high school, and he's a veteran, so that's how I learned about it. And I like the idea, so I ordered some, and it has our city Malacca logo on the front, and then in the back it says, "You make a difference." And the idea is, for a variety of things, it could be someone like Senator Klobuchar on Monday to present to her kind of, you know, to remember us, and you know, if a bill's coming across her table and it's sitting there, she might think of us, that kind of thing, for her work she does with us. Also, for someone, say was volunteering down at the skate park, helping set that up or whatever, those people that do all those things in our town that we don't bring to a council meeting and give them a certificate and do all that, but they do great things. I just thought it'd be a nice way to kind of just one-on-one, thank you, you're appreciated, you're noticed for helping make our city better, because I think there's a ton of people that do things, little, they think are little things that are big things that make our community better, so just gonna try it out. So now you know what it is, so if I walk up to you and give you one of these, I don't have to do a five-minute explanation, you'll know, you'll know what's going on, so hopefully it helps, hopefully it helps some people at least feel better about the things they're doing and the help they're giving to our community, so that's it. That's all I have.
All right.
If nothing else, I will take a motion for adjournment.
So move.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Adjourned.